Evening, everybody. Welcome to a meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Wednesday, November 5th, at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo?
Present.
Councilmember Lester is absent tonight. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Here.
Councilmember Fiamara?
Here.
President Finn?
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and the Corporation Council Frank Tukranis. We will now have a salute to the flag.
Please remove your caps, be after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I welcome, everybody, to our first meeting of November, the day after Election Day. Congratulations to the two new elected council persons, George Ennis and Tracy Johnson. And congratulations to Mike Reinhardt, being reelected. Democracy lives in Long Beach. Very happy for that. It was a good election with, I think, no bad things happened during the election itself. I personally don't like early voting, but that's my personal opinion. We'll get on to the City Manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Brennan. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. The City Manager's report be very brief, so to start, I want to acknowledge and thank everyone who ran for City Council. I know firsthand the amount of time and energy that goes into these campaigns, so I commend all the candidates for stepping up to serve the community. Congratulations to Mike, Tracy, and George on their victory, and I am sure we will continue to have advocates like Roy, Lillian, and Peggy to keep us all accountable. I look forward to working with all of you, but again, thank you all to everyone who campaigned for this great city, trying to make it better. That being said, next Tuesday is Veterans' Day. All are encouraged to join city officials and the Joint Veterans Organization to our annual commemoration ceremony at 10:30 AM, right here on the sixth floor of City Hall. Ceremony is our community's way to publicly thank our veterans for bravely serving our country, so please come out and join us. In honor of Veterans' Day, City Hall and the Magnolia Center will be closed for business, but the Rec Center and ICE Arena will remain open. Buses will be running on the holiday schedule, and there will be no residential sanitation pickup. I would also like to mention that applications for this year's Electric Light Parade are currently being accepted. Applications can be obtained on the Long Beach website at longbeachmy.gov/litparade. Lastly, I just want to raise everyone's awareness that our fall hydrant flushing is currently taking place. We're updating our website and social media daily with the approximate location of where flushing is taking place each night, so our residents can plan accordingly. The process takes about two weeks and is expected to be wrapped up by next weekend. With that, I'll conclude the City Manager's report. Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you, Dan.
Brennan, if you may, can I get a second?
Yes, absolutely.
I usually don't talk about things like this, but first of all, I want to begin by congratulating newly-elected members of the City Council, as well as our current member, Mike Reinhardt. So, big round of applause for him. And everybody else, Tracy Johnson and George Ennis. On a more personal note, I wrote something down I want to share with everybody. I just returned from a family vacation abroad. Being in a different time zone allowed me to be disconnected a bit from, you know, I guess, this, the reality and the election. So, it gave me time to have some perspective. What I observed from a distance was unfortunately remind of just how ugly politics can be, especially here in Long Beach. I've always prided myself on not being a political person. In this city, and I believe in this city, our shared love for Long Beach and our desire to make it better should be what unites us. Sadly, this recent election season showed something different. I witnessed campaigns filled with personal attacks, lies, and insults, even against people's families, businesses, and livelihoods. I saw social media posts that were blatant falsehoods. One post in particular suggested that our outstanding police commissioner doesn't do his job, or looks the other way for certain businesses. An accusation that's absolutely absurd, and deeply disrespectful, mind you. It's showing me that nobody's safe from politics. These type of attacks show that no one is safe from the politics here, not even the person who risks his life every day to make sure that this city is safe and you're protected. Even worse, there's anonymous pages, like Take Back the Beach, where hidden authors spread lies and attacks, even against council members, even those not running for election. I'll use myself as an example. The coward that runs that page, and I have my suspicions of who you are, hide behind a keyboard and refuse to reveal their identity. Post false claims about myself, including supposed issues with the restaurant I'm involved with, alleged hatred I had for a past police commissioner, and even that I plan to step down in January, after we win, and replace somebody special in my appointment. Well, I got news, I'm not going anywhere. And the only action I'll be taking is against the individual or individuals that hide behind these fake and cowardly keyboards. And I'll be doing that through my individual attorney and subpoena in that platform, and then going after that person with the full ramification of the law. That being said, this job, it's hard enough. And as most of you know, most of us serve in Long Beach, this position requires countless hours each week with very little financial compensation. It's already difficult to find qualified people willing to take on the responsibility of a thankless job, and the toxic and politically motivated attacks only make it harder. There's no place for that kind of behavior in our community. And I think the voters spoke last night, and let everybody know that. And I think that we sent a clear message. Perhaps we can all learn something from that. I look forward to a better Long Beach, a more united Long Beach, and to be continuing to do everything I can personally do with this council, no matter who's on it, to make the city the best it can be. Finally, I want to express my appreciation to those who served. While I disagree mostly with everything Roy Lester says or his views, I want to thank him for his service, because he does put in his time and come here and does stuff for the city. Mr. Bendo, I want to thank you. You've been here for eight years, and I think you've done a lot of good for the city, and I know you've been the brunt of these other side of things as well, so thank you and best of luck to you. I enjoy our friendship, and I think everybody up here values your opinion. So...
We still got three more weeks of them.
We do, we do. To Mrs. Mosley and Mrs. Butts, I don't know if you're in the audience, but I didn't really get to know you guys. I tried to stay out of the election, I was sucked into this, but I look forward to getting to know you guys and hearing what positive views and ideas you have, and hopefully we can work together on getting those things together. And thank you for you guys stepping up and running. As you can tell from the speech, it's not an easy job, but your effort truly matters, so thank you for that. To all who continue to believe in us, thank you. We remain committed to the progress in improving the life here in Long Beach, even with a few disruptors along the way. We all know who you are, but most importantly, God bless America and God bless the City of Long Beach, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. I guess we'll get on with the meeting now. To the agenda.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement for consulting services with the most responsible proposer.
So, this item authorizes the City to enter into an agreement with WSP USA for them to conduct a roadway safety action plan. I do want to mention, WSP is an internationally-recognized engineering firm, so it is good to see them interested in working here in Long Beach. It's good to see more bidders coming in here, especially some of this caliber. WSP scored the highest technical marks among the seven firms that submitted proposals for this project, and was the lowest cost of those deemed qualified at $236,389.25. As you recall from the last meeting, the goal of this project is to devise a plan to reduce roadway fatalities and serious injuries. The plan is needed in order to apply for future grant funding to implement the recommendations, which are expected to be going for those grants next spring. The City won a federal grant that will cover 100% of these costs for this study, and I have Ken Arnold and Tyler Huffman here, if you have any further additional questions.
Okay, we have questions from the Council. John?
Could you just talk a little bit about, and you might have answered what would have been my follow-up question, but what are we going to learn from this report that we, our police department, doesn't already know?
So, I could have Ken add some more to this, but really, this gives us the background and the data necessary to apply for, we know where the intersections are the worst...
Right.
But you have to compile that data, you have to present it in a certain way. The grants to actually implement those sorts of projects require you to have a study done...
Well, that was my follow-up, is do you need the study to apply for the grants?
Right.
For the actual change?
So, you need that study in order to get the future grants.
Okay. Because I mean, I spoke to the police, and of course, you know, they're like, we know where the bad corners are and, you know, the bad spots. So, I guess that was my question, is what are we going to get out of this that we don't already know?
Yeah, well, the data collection that the police have on accident data will be mapped, will be run through some computer software that this firm has to compile issues. In addition, what we're doing, which a lot of other places are not doing, is we're going to map, as part of this project, all our fixed objects that are along the roadway. So, we'll map light poles, hydrants, to see how those fall into play with safety, and this also looks at pedestrians and other modes of travel.
Okay. Does, is light timing an issue they also look at?
It's an indirect thing that gets looked at.
Okay.
So, we'll work with the county on their signalized intersections, and when they ever do analysis on the lights, they look at timing and modifications all in one. Pedestrian crossing times, countdown timers, and the phases of the signal and where the left turns are required.
Okay. Well, I, because the reason I ask is I think it's common knowledge, you know, people figure, know what the light timing is and know they got to blow through yellow lights to not get stuck at multiple traffic lights, you got to blow through the yellow lights.
It means go faster, right?
That's what it means, in Long Beach at least, which is obviously a safety issue.
Well, I mean, I think the problem, one of the problems is that the timing is not controlled by Long Beach.
No, it's controlled by the county.
Right. So, it seems to be out of sync, and it keeps changing, not necessarily westbound so much as eastbound.
So, because I lived that side of the aisle, the county's intent always is to have a progression during the rush hour. The signals in Long Beach are not on a computer system, they're on timers that are tied directly into the power grid. So, when we have power issues, the timer gets put out of whack. The county does have a project where they're going to put the system on a computer, which will allow it to be controlled remotely, and local power spikes will not put the signals out of phase.
When necessary, right? Like you just said, they would control it for, let's say, rush hour? Because right now, we have a big problem on Beach Street.
Yeah, right now, the signals in the city are old, so they're limited how they can be programmed. On the central county system, they can be programmed numerous ways.
Right.
So, you have more flexibility on different progressions for weekends versus holiday, not for holidays, but for weekends versus during the work week, and then east and west, you can do different things.
Well, when can that be done?
The county is in the design process. I do not know whether they're funding, I think they had some funding issues with it, I have to double-check.
Right, okay. Questions, Mike?
I think John and Dan covered it. I mean, it's great that we're getting a grant to do this study, because anybody in this room who's ever worked with grants, I know a lot of us have, you have to have the complete study done, down to every single detail, and the fact that we're able to use a grant to get that, to apply for the grants for the actual work, I think is going to be very beneficial.
Yeah, and this work will include public input. It's not, just not being done internally, there's going to be public outreach for this work.
Okay.
I got one more question. That seems like a lot of money for a plan, you know, I have no idea, you know, because I'm new to this part of this, is this the standard going rate?
Yeah, I thought this would be more money to get to...
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the county got a grant similar to this for $600,000. So, you, the City did very well, so they'll be in-depth working.
You knew somebody up there, and you made a call?
Everybody got a grant when they put them out.
Okay.
I'm good.
Questions for the public, comments? All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you. But you got one?
Yes. Now, come on up to the podium, please. Sorry.
Dale Greenstein. With who is this grant coming from, or from whom?
Department of Transportation for the federal government.
It's federal?
Federal.
It works through New York State, but the funding is federal funding.
Okay, thank you.
U.S. DOT.
I guess it's just a follow-up. Are we guaranteed to get this money back from the Department of Transportation? I don't see the word "grant" in here at all. I do see the last sentence, "will be reimbursed." So, will we get 230...
As long as we follow their rules, yes.
Okay, and what does "future borrowing" mean?
Future borrowing, what do you look...
Second to the last line, third to the last line.
You know, we likely won't need that, right? If we're rolling over funds, the likelihood is we won't need that.
Yeah. We hope to have this done in such a short period of time that we won't need any, use any bond ordinance to fund this project while we wait for our grant funding to get back.
So, we have to borrow in the future for this?
Possibly. At the last meeting, we had a bond on this presented here, in case we needed to borrow, but we're working towards not trying to do that. But in either case, it gets totally reimbursed 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close that, please.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of domestic control valves at the water purification plant.
So, this resolution is for the domestic control valves, as mentioned, at our water purification plant, which are currently in need of replacement. These are valves that govern the flow of water from the plant to all of our residents and businesses. We received five bids to conduct this work, and Benson Contracting came in as the lowest responsible bidder. Benson has done several projects successfully with the city and is well-regarded. This is another one of those state-of-good-repair projects that have been neglected over the years, that adds to the cost of operations and results, you know, as we had those discussions about water bills and why they're so high, there's a lot of maintenance that goes into these plants, and this is one of the items that really needs to get done.
Okay. Question from the, question, Mike?
How old are these valves?
Ken, you have the age of those?
They're in excess of 20 years, I believe.
And what's usually, I mean, how often should they be replaced?
They're past their useful life.
Past useful life?
Yes. Well, they haven't failed yet, they need to be done before they fail or appear in an emergency.
Okay.
Yeah, and the problem with these, Mike, is when they fail, it's usually a stem breaking or something like that, and you're stuck then with the valve wherever it breaks, you're stuck with it there, and then to, you know, to redo that during the operation, you could either lose water pressure to the city, or not be able to turn off water pressure to the city, so one or the other. So, if you have some conflicts, it's stuck in that position, you have to dig it out and cut it out at the time. Replacing is just the easier way to do it, before it fails.
John? Are these manually-controlled valves? Are they modulating valves? Do you know what they are?
I would assume, I would assume they're manual. Steve, you could answer that, but I think, I don't think most of our systems are computerized valve systems.
What are we doing? Steve Friedman, the city engineer. So, they're, they have some manual capabilities, but they're operated on solenoid.
So, they're solenoid, okay. Solenoid-operated?
Yes.
Okay. And it says that they're going to be replaced in a staged manner, so over what period of time is this going to take? How long is this going to take?
We're estimating about three to four months, because these valves are very large, so they got to be taken out carefully and replaced in kind over the same time period. So, there's five of them, that, five large distribution water systems out to the city. So, we're going to stage them one at a time, so as Dan said, that we're not going to hinder the water flow to the city.
How big's the line these are in?
I believe these are 12-inch lines.
12-inch lines, okay. All right, thank you.
So, before you go, nice to see you and meet you. Water has been a major topic over the last couple of weeks, why it costs so much for our city to provide a gallon of water. I'm not holding either of you to, you know, to even answer the question, but I think that it would be helpful to, at least me, and I think probably many other people in the room, to develop an understanding of, you know, why it costs so much, and, you know, how can we mitigate that cost, you know, if it's even possible, you know? You're new here, and so you, Ken, so it's not, this isn't like a finger-pointing type of thing, but really, I'm trying to understand it, you know, because we've had a big discussion about the price of water going up, and, you know, no one likes that, including me, you know? So, do you guys have any answers for that?
So, throughout the city, there are 10 wells, spread out from the west to the east. Two of them are completely out of service. These wells are in excess of 60 to 70 years old. They're back from, they're 60 to 70 years old. I'm in the process of redesigning one of them now, but these wells draw water from 1,500 feet below the city, and they send, they send the water back to the water tower, the elevated water tower, which comes to the tank.
Right.
The 2 million-gallon tank that's sitting on the purification campus. So, it is a large piping distribution system, there's a lot of bells and whistles, so that's part of the reason why a lot of this stuff needs to be updated. It is well beyond its useful life, but our plant folks, they live this place, and they take very good care of the plant.
Yeah, right. I'm not throwing the blame on the workers by any means, I just, I don't have an understanding of it, and I got to bet most people don't either, you know, and obviously, we can't live without water, you know?
Right.
So, that partly answers my question, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if I, did I answer correctly? Did I answer what you were looking for?
Well, I guess I'll have to get a book on it, right? Questions from the public? Yes. I think we can make an exception, you can ask it from there.
Thank you.
No?
Not on the microphone, then.
You can ask a question from there.
I have concerns about our water. I just got a little bit of information from what this gentleman said. There are many people in this community that have no idea about our water, including the fact that it comes from the Lloyd's apple, unless that has changed.
That's the same, right?
It still comes from there.
Okay. With that in mind, it would be a wonderful thing if we could get that information out to the people by way of flyer.
Well, I guess a flyer, but we could probably put it on a website, too, unless you think that's not enough.
Well, the City puts out a water quality report, and I believe some of that information is in there. I'll talk to John McNally, and we'll make sure that there's anything that's low-hanging fruit that we could add to that.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, men. Appreciate it. All right, so we'll close that one, too.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a grant for the Long Beach Police Department.
So, this one is to accept a grant of $18,800 from Long Beach Aware. Our police department utilizes these funds to combat underage drinking. As always, thank you to Judy Vining and the Long Beach Aware for all their good work and ongoing support of our police department. Commissioner DePalma is here, if you have any further questions.
John, question? I guess just one, since, as Dan mentioned, Long Beach Aware's mission is to curtail underage drinking. Do these funds have to be used for something specific? I know they're for overtime, but for specific functions performed during overtime?
These funds are used for operations to combat underage drinking, and we have a good collaboration with Long Beach Aware. That collaboration extends to the prosecutor's office and the courts, and not only do we do enforcement on the underage drinking, we also get to kids' education once they get caught, so...
Okay, so you have some latitude?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike?
I have a question. In the past, and I know this from being in a bar owner, been asked to put bouncers or undercover cops at the door. Is that still a program?
Yeah, we call it guest door man, we still do that.
Right. I have a particular problem with that, because I don't think it's on the, you're 17, 18, wherever, you know, you are. I think it's on the bar owner. I'm probably biased and probably, you know, not, something colleagues of mine would want to hear, but it's on the bar owner and their security to make sure they're not letting in underage drinkers, not have a cop there for when an underage drinker comes to ruin that adolescent's life, or have something on their record, or whatever the case may be. It should be on the responsibility of the establishment, and it should be, it should be practiced every day, not just...
I agree.
On a, you know, a particular operation. So, I have a problem with that personally. I go out of my way to make sure any establishment I'm involved with has the proper scanners and, you know, people trained, New York State license, so on and so forth, not for some kid, because most people, including myself, in college, I snuck into bars.
Should have been older.
Yeah, should have been older, but, I mean, it's, I think it's, I don't believe in the program. I think it should be on the actual business to police themselves, not put somebody there, you know, hey, it's window dressing, in my opinion, so I think it's something that we should look at, is my opinion.
What's the idea of that? Is it to, disincentive to, you know, kids because they find, they think there might be a cop as a bouncer, and that word gets around?
It's disincentive, it's, yeah, it is disincentive, disincentive to kids to go into bars. Also, it's, you know, to educate the bars as well, you know, on proper tactics and techniques to, you know, to card properly and identify young kids.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what he's saying about the, what Chris is saying about the ruining the kid's record or life, but I guess the fear has to be there, you know? I mean, that how it used to be with narcotics, where people who do, you know, go in to buy narcotics, and if you arrested them for loitering for the purpose of narcotics, it made them less inclined, not usually, but sometimes, to go to a narcotics place and buy narcotics, because they might get scooped up and arrested by the sweep that night. Once again, though, now they have a record, you know, a police record, and makes it hard for them to get a job down the road.
Or get into college, or have a scholarship that they had, for what? Because if they're going to that bar, I can tell you firsthand, if they're going to a bar and they're underage, they're going there weekly or daily, and that's the practice of that bar. I can tell you that firsthand. I have bouncers take away, stop clicking that, please, I have bouncers taking away IDs. We had that program a few years back, we were giving the bouncers. And it starts at home, too. I've had parents call and threaten bar managers. You took away my son's fake ID. Not, hey, thank you, or, you know, not calling the police, they're defending their 17-year-old kid trying to go into a bar. So, put in a cop at the bar door that their common practice is to let people in, is doing what? It's making them look good and ruining some adolescent's life, because it's common practice. You put, you can put a cop at nine doors out of nine bars, and the young people who drink are going to go to the one bar, and they're going to leave the other eight alone, because they have a reputation already of not letting them in. That's the practice of the bar. I can tell you that firsthand, okay? There's a reason certain places are crowded and certain places aren't, and whatnot, so, I mean, I think it's a terrible program personally. I think it's...
I don't know what to think about that.
Yeah, no, I just, it's my opinion, I mean, I, do I think underage drinking's terrible? Yeah. Have we, have I done it? Absolutely. But I have a 17-year-old daughter, and I know some of her friends do, and I know she probably does it. I know they're also good kids, and they're in college, and they're not around here, they don't live here, but it's the bar owner who should be getting in trouble for that, not the kid, because that's a practice, that's something they practice. You know what? People know in town what bars not to go to, and because they're bouncers and their security staff and their... what bars not to go to. And because their bouncers and their security staff and their bartender staff all have made that clear. I went to Judy's, I don't know if Judy, if you remember, when you had me organized, you were thinking it was the largest aware class you've ever had.
Judy wants to get up and say something.
We wanted to break it up into two nights. It was so large. And it was effective, because the responsibility was on us, not, what responsibility's on 17-year-old kids? It's silly.
The kids, once the kids get to-
I think you're missing, I don't know if this is on or not.
Kids go, yeah.
Okay, I think you're missing part of the program.
Okay.
Number one, we call it guest doorman, because as far as I know, the police are not in uniform.
Right.
Oh, right.
That's the point.
Wait, no, that's not the point. The point is legally, only the police can confiscate a license. Your doorman may do it, but it's not legal, okay? So the theory is that if you confiscate the license at your place, okay, the kid can no longer try to get in at the other eight places, because they don't have a license. That's one. Two, there is no record. We designed this very carefully, because nobody wants a child who makes a mistake, because their brain is informed enough to make a rational choice, to carry this for the rest of their lives. So by design, we work hand, as Judge Chikranis knows, we work hand in hand with the city courts as well. And so when a youngster gets a citation, this is the process. When the youngster gets a citation, they go to court. Whoever it is, whether it's the corporation council's office, or the ADA, depending on whether it's fraudulent ID, or open container, whatever it is, they are given the option of pleading guilty, when there will be a paper trail, or pleading not guilty, and going to three-hour online education class that we run at Long Beach Aware. Once they are finished with that class, there's a pre-test and a post-test. So we're kind of data-driven, so we like to know if they've learned anything, what they knew coming in. That's number one. Number two, the judges since COVID have required an essay from each youngster who finishes the class. And it's not a, I promise I'll never drink again kind of essay. They want facts, and they want information. For me, if any person walks out of that class knowing that they can call 911 when their friend passes out, because they do, and not get in trouble, and that piece of information alone is vital in saving a kid's life. What happens after that is that there is literally one record of that. And I have it. And I can tell you that in the years that we've been doing this, and it's since 2000, okay? In the years that we've been doing this, I have had, I would say, at least a dozen, if not more, phone calls from either the New York City Fire Department or Police Department, because as you may know, you can't have an alcohol violation held against you. But if you lie, you can. So they tell the truth, and personnel calls us and wants to know if they completed the class. So nobody's life is ruined. We deliberately did that. But again, this is only one piece of what we do. This is only one piece of the operations that we pay for. They also do party patrols. They also have people up on the boardwalk. It's really designed to help a kid get from here to there without ruining their lives. Because once we knew and heard 20 years ago that a child who begins drinking at the age of 14 on a regular basis, and regular doesn't mean daily or even weekly, it means probably twice a month, have a 40% higher risk of developing a problem later in life with alcohol or any other drugs than a kid who waits, okay? So you can't have that knowledge and not do something about it. At least we couldn't. So-
I don't disagree with anything you said. I just think that kids are kids, and adults are adults, and adults should be held accountable. I know a kid recently who, start of this school year in August, was going to Bucknell University, lives in Suffolk County, got caught in a Huntington bar with, you know, fake ID. His own name wasn't anybody else's name, so it wasn't an identity thing or anything like that. And it was the end of July, he was leaving August to Bucknell, a full scholarship, and he lost his scholarship. So I disagree with maybe the process.
First of all, it's a misdemeanor in Suffolk County.
I understand. I'm just telling you the view of the school took and what happened to the kid, because he went out with his friends.
But again, this would not happen with our program, because they are never charged with anything other than a violation.
But it's still in their record.
No, it is not.
Yeah, it is, actually. I can tell you, because from my private company, we run reports called Crawl, which Rich might be familiar with. And there's things on there from, as little as disorderly conduct, disturbance, noise, violations of open container in college, only out in New York. I've seen it all.
You could get that expunged, though.
But even people of youthful offenders and expunges, it's still there. Run a Crawl report. So educate yourself on it. I don't have to, I'm not gonna sit-
Yeah, right. But a college is not allowed to expel somebody based on a report that's expunged.
No, no, no. I'm talking as a private employee. It shows up. As an employer, it shows up.
Right.
And, you know, even, you go for a gun permit. People I know who've gone for gun permits, things as little as that were expunged or youthful offender, Y.O., still comes up on their record. So I don't think there's such a thing as that. Again, my view is it should be strictly, I've had a problem with this for 100 years, because, you know, the responsibility should be on the adults running the establishment. If they have that reputation, because that's who they cater to, and one night they put a cop at the door, and they busted people, they're, they're almost entrapping the kids, is what they're doing. That's, that's what they're doing. Run a tight establishment, don't let underage people in, and you wouldn't have a problem. It's a very simple business model. But they profit from it, and then they want to, at the same time, get these kids' lives in shambles, so.
No, we do not want to get these kids' lives in shambles.
I'm not saying you. I'm saying, you know, it is-
Again, I can only speak to what we do here, in partnership with the police department since the year 2001.
No, I know. And we were the ones told to collect the licenses, so.
Well, I'm not sure who told you that, but I do know that-
I'm sure.
I'm sure you are, and I'm not asking.
They all turned into us, though, the licenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we were told, a few years back, you remember the program?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we were told, so.
I mean, there has to be a disincentive. If, if the banks are open, if there's no problem, you know, getting in, or there's no retribution for doing wrong.
And again, this is not designed to be punitive. We purposely-
I'm not talking about punitive. I'm talking about disincentivizing it.
Right.
If you know you sell drugs, if, if, if-
That's different.
Everybody here knows John Bendo, Dan Creighton, and myself sell drugs. People who use drugs are gonna go with them. If they know Frank Chikranis and Mike Reinhardt don't sell drugs, they're not going to see them.
Understood.
It's pretty simple.
Understood. But for the research we have done in this community, and the data we've collected, it's a pretty safe bet, you know, that there are lots of places that do wink at the idea of underage drinking, and have the attitude, honestly, that you have, which is I did it when I was a kid. Lucky you that it didn't ruin your life. Lucky you. But if we can do something to help prevent that for any of our children-
Hold the adults accountable.
We do, that's-
Well, you're bringing up, you're bringing up a point on both sides, okay? Because ruining someone's life, as you said, could start at 14, drinking every day, or drinking a couple of times a week, and then it can more-
No.
It can ruin someone's life.
A couple of times a month.
Excuse me?
A couple of times a month.
Right. It could ruin, it could ruin someone's life. Getting caught going into a bar with a fake ID could not ruin their life, but certainly change their life.
Make it difficult, yeah.
I don't know. I think you have to be, you have to, you have to own up to what you do.
The other thing is, it's only one piece of it.
If you get a fake ID and you get caught with it, that's on you. I'm sorry. That's the way I look at it.
Mr. Finn, this is only one piece of a whole bunch of things that we do as a community, where we do hold adults responsible.
Yeah, welcome.
We were the first city, first municipality in the state of New York to pass the social host law, which is holding the adult who allows it responsible. It's not on the kid.
Yeah.
It's on the adult.
That's how it should be.
So there are pieces of this. And again, we're more than, especially now that marijuana is legal in New York State, we expanded the social host law a couple of years ago to include marijuana. We always had opioids in it. So again, it's under 21.
Okay.
And what you do as an adult is what you do as an adult.
All right. Well, I'll bet there's other people who have comments on this. No? Oh, you do? Okay. Oh, okay. Come on up. What's your name?
James, 95 East Fulton Street. As my president was diligently speaking, Ms. Judy Vining, we've-
And you mean me, not Trump, right?
No, no, no. I'm talking about my president here.
Oh.
The director of Long Beach Aware. Been working with Judy for over 20 years. And she does a diligent job in doing research. This is, this is good for our council member elects to see discourse and discussion amongst ideas, right? You speak from a former police perspective, and a father-
And a human.
And a human. Well, I think he's speaking as a human, too. He's speaking as a bar owner. And a person that he said, I've done it, too. He said it. He's testifying, like in church. It's his testimony. But again, Judy speaks with facts. And in this meeting, I think it's one of the greatest meetings in the city of Long Beach, because you have everyone at the table. And I always say, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Everyone is at the table speaking about ways that we can prevent underage drinking because of the damage that it does to the brain, and then the scientific, you know, facts, that we have doctors and people, researchers that come in. We've done meetings here, done meetings at the library. And so I think that the conversation continues. But when Judy speaks, she's, she's not, you know, it's all like, if you see all of the detailed emails that come from her, you know, when she's writing the grant, trying to get the city to be able to do things, and like you said, it can be expunged. It's something that, you know, yes, we can expect a lot of the adults to be the adults in the room, but that don't always happen. And we know that in a lot of bars, it's a whole lot of things going on. Maybe the owner know about, maybe the owner don't know about. I won't say all of them know about all of the things that go with alcohol, and drugs, and other things that happen from the start of alcohol. And so if Judy, like she said, this is preventative measures, other police commissioners and officers have been a part of the group, teachers, youth, everyone, everyone's around that table. And some of you've been a part of those meetings. Even some of the bar owners give different ideas and give different opinions. It's, again, fact-based evidence. And even with that, it's always room for improvement. So I, I mean, I'm excited that Judy has been consistently going after grants that will benefit our community. And at the same time, it won't hurt our children. Because, again, some children are going to do different things. Whether their parents teach you forever, don't do this, we all know. You did some of the things your mother and father told you not to do. And so if there's a preventative measure that says that you have to do this because you did this, maybe, like you said, that will be that, that, that thing that says, I don't, I don't want to do this no more. You know, having to go to a class, and I'll finish up by saying, you know, having to go to a class, getting information on what alcohol is actually doing to your brain, and your body, and your thoughts, and your thinking process in your life, it may help. And if it can help just one, then we're doing a great job. And, and again, it's a grant to say, how can we help? So thank you, Long Beach Aware.
James, come here for a second. How, you're, me and you, I think, close in age, right?
I'm, I go way back to 76. I'm up there in age.
Same age, we're bicentennial babies.
Yes.
So I'm not debating anything Judy's saying, and Judy will vouchy, that I organized the largest attended class she's ever had, correct? So, and that's because of my strong opinion on this. I'm not debating the effects of alcohol, the, you know, the, all the bad things that can come from it. You grew up in this town?
Yeah.
All right. When you were 16, 17, we knew where we can go. We knew we were getting in with whatever ID. We knew that, right? Let's all be honest. We knew at 16, 17-
Did you guys hang out together?
No.
We hung out. We were close back then. We, we, no, but you knew what places were loose, and where you were getting in. Is that right or wrong? And then you knew places that you weren't getting in.
Well, I would say to you is that, you know, any one of my friends, any one of my family members would tell you that I've never had a drink in my life.
No, I know you haven't. I know that.
But so I wasn't going to clubs-
But you hung out with people who drank, right?
Because my father was a pastor, and I wasn't trying to, you know, I didn't do that. But the thing is that friends in school, yes, they would talk about it. And the thing is, but again, so it's not that you're debating the facts of what alcohol does, but you're saying that you believe that the program is not right. And so it is a debate, and it's, it's okay.
It's a healthy debate. It's a conversation. But I think my, I don't think the program's wrong. I think the emphasis of who's responsible for the problem is wrong. I think, look, I know, I'm well from owning many bars, that I can make, could have made, and still could make a lot more money on those voided nights that are dead, and you fight for business by letting underage people in. Because once you do it, what happens is, you, they go and tell their friends. You know how it works, Judy, right? Then you become that place. And then, and these guys are counting their money at the other night. They don't care that they served a 16-year-old kid, because they're making money. So the one night, they want to play grown-up and say, oh, yeah, let's put undercover cop at the door, even though I know I cater to this business. The way to stop that is have a reputation that so many of us have, and, and put responsibility ahead of financial gains by making yourself known as an establishment that doesn't play around.
Chris, I hear what you're saying. Like, say if it's 7-Eleven, right, and, and they do this deal where they have to go in, and they take, you know, you know, you want to help businesses, but if businesses are not following the law, that has to be-
Drop the hammer.
You know, like you're saying, it happened to other businesses out here, where they did some buy and sell, or whatever, to underage, and so, but I think it's, it's, again, a conversation. And I think it's not to hurt the establishment, but also try to show some of these kids that won't listen to their parents, and won't lis-, you know, because things will happen in some of these establishments. And you got to make kids responsible also. They have to have some kind of-
I don't disagree with any of that. I just, my only thing I disagree with is, I think the emphasis should be on the owner of that establishment. With owning a place that sells alcohol, comes responsibility.
I appreciate you saying it, because you're putting a burden on yourself, too.
Correct.
Yeah. So I appreciate you saying it.
Of course. And I've gone to hell and high water with my, my establishment, to make sure that we're known, you know, taking away IDs, and all the other things, letting people know, we don't care for the, you know, cover charge, whatever it is. You make it known that that is not the place you're getting into. But if they're doing it six days a week, and then on the seventh day of the week, they invite the cop in, and then they're gonna, they're gonna hurt the kids, that's where I have a problem. I think, you know, if it's a known place that is catering to underage drinkers, the owners of that establishment should get in trouble. That's my-
Last thing. I think that you should meet with this group, and I think you can champion this. Because if you, listen, if you're a bar owner, and you want to wake up and shake bar owners, I applaud you for that, Chris.
I did it, Judy.
No, but I'm saying-
I had the biggest class.
Well, I'm saying, there's a little difference here, but if you meet again, and say this is something you're going to champion as a city council member, I guarantee you, bar owners are talking about it already online.
Good. I'm sure they're gonna, I'm sure they're gonna send me some hate mail.
Eileen? Did you have a question, John?
No.
I'm gonna skip right to the audience this time.
Eileen, oh, I'm sorry. Did somebody-
No, no, that was fine.
Eileen Hessian. Mr. Fiamara, you may be the most responsible bar owner in town, and I think you probably are, but that doesn't guarantee that anybody else does. Also, this was a fascinating conversation. Judy, I appreciated hearing from you. But that's not what the question is. The question on here is just, will you accept a grant?
Of course.
This would be for another time. But I have a question about money, which is-
But actually, no, because if we're going to discuss the grant, we might not accept it if we don't like the way it's administered, right? So this discussion is totally, totally reasonable.
Isn't this paying for past overtime?
It could be used for past or present, or future, like up to the end of the year, I believe, right, Richie? Up until?
This, this one was, this, this, this grant is for already, already realized overtime? There's, there's another grant for future overtime?
I thought we had till December, okay.
So you're suggesting that we should shut down the conversation?
No, I'm saying that it should be somewhere else, because this is just asking, will you accept the grant? But my question about the money is this. This is $18,000, $19,000. That's already been spent, is that right? And what about, I mean, thank goodness for the grant. What about next year? Do we hope to get a grant every year? Or then we're going to be stuck for the $18,000 next year?
It was already approved for next year.
Yeah. It what?
Yeah, the federal government already gave Long Beach Aware a grant for next year. So it was already approved.
How about the year after? How about the year after?
Year after that, I don't know.
As they say, one year at a time.
Okay. And then the, my final question, I hope that I have this correct. The money is being spent because cops are guest, uh, bouncers. Is that right?
That's, that's, that's one aspect. There, there's, there's a multitude of, of things that we do with that money.
Oh, okay, like the people on the boardwalk? Are those policemen or are those somebody connected with you?
This is for police officers.
Well, let's put this in perspective for a second, though. There are cities all over the United States that use police officers in uniform, getting paid by the establishment just to work there as a peacekeeper. Uh, not in this town, but actually in, in many others. So that would be a disincentive to anybody coming with a fake ID when you gotta see a police officer in uniform standing at the door. I'm not advocating for that at all, but that is something that could be done as well. So personally, I didn't know that they did police officers working as bouncers undercover, although, I mean, for big criminal cases, yes.
Kinda interesting anyway.
But I did know that. So, I mean, anything's in play, right?
Well, I suggest that you take the grant. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? I think this is a great conversation. Yes. Thank you for running.
Oh, thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
I thanked, I thanked you earlier in the speech. You weren't here yet, though.
Oh, you did? Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll stay a little bit later so you can thank me.
But he also criticized you for not being here. I'm all kidding.
I didn't do that.
I just have a quick question because I don't wanna keep you here longer because I think it's all, I, I agree with everybody that this is a great conversation. Um, the other thing that ruins children's lives is alcohol poisoning and death. So, you know, that's kind of a big deal. So while we're worrying about scholarships and the possibility that they might have a record, I do have a question. My question to the police commissioner would be, in the event that you say that you're called out for a house party of underage kids, what is the response to, you know, the adults that are there or the, how do you treat the children that are caught there in their homes with underage drinking?
So the person, the person throwing the party is, uh, we get a social host summons and then the children there, we would contact their parents to pick them up.
Okay, but no record again and no issues, right?
Correct.
Okay. What do you do with the children who are outside of their homes and then in the neighborhoods that may be drinking outside of their home, not part of a party? What are those situations?
They can be, they're summoned. If they're, if they're 16 years old, they can be summoned. If they're less than 16 years old, they would just take them home to their parents because they're ineligible for a summons at that point because they're too young.
But, and so that will be a record, right? Is that correct?
Well, it's a violation. Uh, through this program, they would, uh, they would go to court. Uh, the court would send them to Long Beach aware to take a class and then it wouldn't be on their record, but if they were applying for, if they were applying for a job, if they were applying for a job, like a government job, they would have to disclose that to their employer.
Which will again, could ruin a young person's, well, or based upon the back and forth...
Well, they might not get the job.
Is that, but the back and forth is you have a record or you have something at least that, that maybe the job would might say something about. So at the end of the day, so I don't wanna split hairs over who we are maybe having a conversation about, whether it's a child who happens to be in front of their home versus because they go into the establishment of whatever bar, um, that we don't wanna penalize the bar and the, the child who may spend money at a bar versus the kid who doesn't have the money to maybe go to the restaurants in the bar, but maybe staying outside their home. So the concern is if we're saying about the children and not ruining their lives, you know, we definitely have to think about it and those different variations. And I agree that there's a responsibility for not just the parents, but also for the restaurants or bar owners as well. But if we're thinking about it, don't, don't just think about it in terms of the ones who are going and can spend the money because we don't wanna maybe punish the restaurants or we don't wanna ruin certain kids' livelihoods. All the kids are kids who should be considered. And once again...
Right, absolutely.
Death is a definite, um, problem, you know, for moving forward. Forget about the scholarship or anything else. It's, um, it's a health concern. It's a health concern.
There's a bunch of bad, terrible things.
Of course, health. But a health concern is a health concern regardless, so. I've got children too, got three, so I get it.
You worry about it as a parent, you worry about it. You don't know, my daughter's away in college right now. I don't know if she's in a bar and somebody puts something in her drink or whatever the case. I just, look, the program, I always support Judy, she knows that. I, I, what I don't support is putting the responsibility on somebody who's a child...
Not to, not to cut you off, I just didn't want to have you reiterate again because...
No, I, I should be doing that.
I'm sorry about that, but I did hear you say it and I don't wanna keep them here much longer. I just wanted to say that, you know, we just want, we wanna think about the whole of Long Beach and not just the kids who have the money to spend to go to the bars. And we wanna think about death as a, as a definitely possible situation and not just protecting the bar owners, not just protecting the parents and specific kids, but...
It's any kid.
Make sure any kid.
Any kid.
That's right.
They're kids.
That's right. On the record, every kid.
Let me run it. Let me run the media. Yeah. Oh, I thought you should've called back. Right, but we're just gonna, we're gonna keep... Okay, yes.
My name is Marsha. I'm a longtime resident of Long Beach. So my question is to Commissioner DePalma and to the city manager. I see that you're putting this grant for, for the police department. Is Channel Park Homes a part of that? Unfortunately, we have the everyday, uh, I don't wanna say crackheads, that's too to me, drug people that are coming in. And so far, we had to literally call the police because one decided to walk into someone's house and lay down on their floor like they lived there. So what are we going to do about this? That household had kids. What are we going to do? Because too many lives are in jeopardy.
We do, we do actual patrols in Channel Park Homes. Uh, we, we do a lot of them. Uh, at least only six, six to seven a day, uh, every day. Um, we also have a narcotics unit that does, you know, uh, that does go after a narcotic crime. The incident you're talking about, unfortunately, it's, that hasn't only happened in Channel Park, it's happened in other areas of town, but that has happened. People have gotten too intoxicated and gone to people's houses. And we do handle, we, we respond to those calls and we, we've handled them accordingly, you know, according to the law. But we are out there.
Yeah, because we're having the OD's there. It's a constant, the needles are being left behind. I'm having to talk to the, the maintenance saying, "Hey, you know, did you see the, the needle over here?" Because they're hiding over there. And there was a couple of times, actually, the other day, I was gonna call you because two of your police officers was walking around and the, and the lady was actually ODing. And they, they were, she was ODing. She had taken so much, but they were walking around and they walked right to their car.
Anytime like that, just call us. Maybe they didn't see her, you know? And, and for these reasons is precisely the reason why we brought the narcotics unit back is, is to combat these, you know, combat these conditions.
So I just wanna make sure that this is included because this is a day-to-day. I work from home, so I'm seeing this on a regular basis. And then there's tenant, being the president of the tenant association, they're calling my phone saying, "Hey, this is what's going on. Did you see this? Did you see that?" I'm constantly calling the ED, the executive director, and say, "Hey, have you reached out to the police and asked them where are they?"
Right.
I don't have small children, but I have grandchildren and they're outside playing. So this is something I don't want them to see.
Absolutely, right, totally agree. Yeah?
So I'm just hoping that it will be more patrol and I'm all for the grant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, that looks like, uh, that's enough on that one. I appreciate it. We got everybody? Thank you, we'll close that.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase information technology equipment for the city's police department through New York State Office of General Services.
Okay, so the police department is looking to purchase 73 Microsoft tablets and related keyboard covers. Tablets integrate with the new records management system and provide more security and flexibility of use. These will be replacing the more traditional vehicle computer systems, which are more expensive and aging out. For example, we no longer need to equip police vehicles with the computer systems, which cost the city approximately $10,000 per vehicle. It's expected the conversion tablets will enhance both efficiency and productivity within a department since the tablets can produce reports for the officers based on the input, the information input at the scene. Again, Commissioner DePalma's here if you have any further questions.
Uh, I'd like to say one thing before we get to this. Uh, Judy, I wanted to say before, I, I appreciate and I think everybody in this whole room appreciates what you're doing, so thank you. You know, that, yeah. I, I meant to say that at the end of that, but, yeah, so thank you.
You know what? The truth of the matter is, it's not me. It's the whole coalition of people that need...
Right, well, yes, you and your group, I should say, right.
You know what? One of, one of the things I was gonna say under good and welfare, but I was, $18,000 approved. Is that, first of all, congratulations to all the new council members and thank the old ones for everything they do. But since 2001, we've had a sitting council member at every, well, not every, but at most of our coalition meetings until two years ago. Um, so now that you've gotten your feet wet and you know about doing your council job, I would invite you to have a, one of you as a designated person. We're talking an hour and a half, maybe, once a month virtually. So it's not a big strain. I can't use food as an incentive anymore because my coalition won't meet in person anymore. But at any rate, the worst pieces are important. Because we can't really do and talk about policies or things like this in depth in three minutes under good and welfare.
Yeah, right. You're right. Yeah, I agree.
So I would invite you to do that.
Sure, I'll be there.
Okay.
I hope people are happy when I show up, but I'll be there.
Hey, you know...
I'm a very opinionated man, but you know...
I hadn't noticed, but okay. But the reality is, when we did social host, there were knock-down, drag-out, screaming matches between the DA and the corporation council at that time because they didn't think it would work. We welcome that. That's how you get...
That's right.
To a consensus.
Yep.
You need to, you know...
You gotta talk about it.
Right. And we can agree to disagree without taking it personally.
That's right, yeah. All right, thank you. Thanks a lot. I remember when I was a rookie and I had computer cars in 1984. It was like unbelievable. I thought it was, we were in the Jetsons, but now they have iPads. Questions? You got a question, John?
Uh, just one, but I don't know if you're gonna notice because I don't see Al here. Uh, do, are we required, because they use for the police, that we have to get Trade Agreement Act compliant laptops?
I don't know.
Okay. It, it's a government requirement for certain agencies because they have more security on them?
I'll check that.
Okay.
I'm just, this is one of the, you know, a lot of the things that we've been doing over the last few months is the modernization of our systems, whether it be iPads to lifeguards and things like that. But what's great about this is, what's the comparison again? $195 compared to $10,000 to outfit a car?
I think it's about $10,000 to outfit a car, Rich, and it's about, I think it's about $2,000 total for these things, right?
$2,000 total, all in? Okay. That's great. Um, how quickly can these be actioned?
We're hoping we have training this month to start it, so we're hoping to do it by the new year.
By the new year?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Any questions for, yes? Then maybe you come up here?
Dale Greenstein. I'm sure many of you have children within the schools that are using Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera. The schools didn't buy them in most cases. What happened was they went to companies to have them donated. It might be something good to check into. Maybe you could get a company to supply you with the iPads that you need. It's definitely an idea that could save this city some money.
I, I think that, uh, just speaking off the top of my head on this, every police department in the country is trying to do something like this.
Do something like what?
Like modernize or using iPads, laptops, uh, things of that nature.
And that's what I'm speaking about.
I know.
It would be a great idea for these companies to have you tell them that you'll let everybody know that you're using their system.
We are constantly...
And companies are very interested in helping you out like that.
We are constantly looking at, at various ways of funding different projects and we're always looking for grants and things like that. And we, we do contact foundations looking for money for support. Um, you know, we have, we have had some grants in the past that helped us with our technology. Uh, this was budgeted for through our capital plan. We did not find a grant to pay for this particular project, but we are, we have had other grants to help us with other technology investments.
Do you guys have grant writers?
We do, yeah, they're very good. Excellent, they're fantastic, yeah.
Okay, I don't doubt that they are because you seem to have a lot of grants.
Yeah.
But this is further than a grant writer. This is somebody that's looking for almost what you would call a gift. And you are going to let the people in the community know that that company is helping you out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, thank you. We'll close that. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll put you on overtime if you come up one more time.
Item number five is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Okay, so this item transfers funds to cover unanticipated retirement payouts as well as to adjust some funds to cover reorganization in the city clerk's office. It's primarily transferring regular salaries from PD and FD and transferring them to the termination salaries line of contingency. Uh, we have comptroller Resnick here if you have any further questions.
John? Mike? Chris? Questions from the public on this? Okay, thank you. Close that then.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing a settlement of legal actions between Stefan Chernosky and the city of Long Beach at all. Chernowski and the City of Long Beach at all.
Okay, this is a resolution authorizing a settlement of legal actions between an employee of the city and the City of Long Beach. Corporation Council Decranis is here, but any substantive discussion on this matter will have to be taken place in the executive session.
Right, so any questions?
I think we got most of our questions answered.
Right.
So we had a briefing with the corporation council, obviously because we can't discuss this in public. So I think we had our questions answered.
Pretty much. Comments from the public? James is coming up already, and you're next, Eileen. He was already on his way up.
No, please.
All right, that's a gentleman.
Oh, thank you so much, President.
You're welcome.
Made me forget what I was gonna ask. I don't think we know anything about this, you know, and maybe it's not our business to know it, but I'm just wondering, did we take this to court or did we settle?
It's in court right now.
Oh, so this is not a given, that he's gonna get the 150?
It's in court right now. There's a, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
It's been in court for several years, maybe five or six years, and it's, we're trying to settle it at this point, and I think this is the proper way to do it. I can't talk about the particulars, because it's an act of litigation, but in the totality of the circumstances, I think it's a good settlement.
Okay, so for the five and six years we've been paying court costs or something?
Correct.
Do we have any idea how much that is?
No, at this point, no.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
James Hodge, I know a little bit about this case. I won't go into detail about it, but it is good when a city or municipality or anybody is getting sued where sometimes it is costing you more than the actual lawsuit itself, and, you know, sometimes, listen, you gotta fight. You gotta fight for a long time. But I know from experience of taking this city on task, no matter which party, because it's been both, that the city has had to pay out a lot, a lot, a lot of money. Do your research. And so I say that anytime the city can look to say, you know, one thing is you have a former judge here, who's the corporation council, former police officer, he has a lot of experience, you know?
ADA.
And you. No, I'm saying, and you're a former police officer, and this is a, you know, this is, and if you looked at the details of the lawsuit, it's something that probably should've been settled a long time ago. I would say so. And so it's just like some of the cases that I've had against the city, and thank God I saved the city from hundreds of thousands of dollars in my last situation, because I didn't want to bring it on the taxpayers. And so I say, you know, again, on this lawsuit, it's good that you are looking at, and again, it's good that the city is looking at saying, is this going to continue costing us money or can we come to some resolution? And with Judge Decranis going through the details with all of you, and then just hearing Mr. Bendel, Councilman Bendel, say, we got all of our questions answered, whether he liked them or not, he just said we got them all answered, and he didn't say anything after that. So I'm thinking that there could be some mutual agreement to say, let's settle this. We may have some difference of opinions, but again, six years, you know, it could, with lawsuit like that, it could be costing us way more than to just say, let's get it out of court and let's settle it. We may not want to give whatever the person is suing for, but let's settle it, and I think this is good, that the city is trying to, in this lawsuit, and if there's any others that's costing the city multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars, if it can be settled, to settle it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, thank you. We'll close that.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for animal shelter infrastructure improvements.
Okay, the city's animal shelter is in need of a new HVAC system, and we were successful in obtaining a $225,000 grant from the state for such a purpose. There is a $25,000 match, a 10% match for the city for this grant and work. This is not just the HVAC unit itself, but it's also the duck work as well, because this facility needs to be operated 24/7. The work is complicated, needs to be done in phases. We did put our city engineer on it, who you met earlier, Steve, from DBW, and he's evaluating the project. I'm confident he will be able to get the cost of this significantly lower than what it is at now. We are not awarding the project tonight. We're just accepting a grant and agreeing to the 10% match by the city. If we come in under the $250,000, which I expect we will, we will petition the state to have those funds reprogrammed for another purpose, so that we don't lose those funds. I do have Ken and Steve here, as well as Tyler from our grants group, if you have any further questions.
My dog asked me to put air conditioning in the house as well, once they saw this grant. You got questions, Sean?
No, I think Dan answered the question perfectly. Like, we could repurpose the funds as you think it's gonna come under the allotted funds, so that's great.
Yeah.
Questions from the public? Comments?
Quick question. Where's the grant coming from again? I'm sorry, I didn't get the details.
Hold on a second. New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Yes. I just, you know, and I know it was a question earlier about grant writing and Nancy Sweet and Patty Bond and some of the team members that write these grants, which the municipality can get a lot of grants. We qualify for a lot of them. There's different parts of the city that qualify for some of the grants. I know Ms. Marsh was talking about grants for Channel Park homes for years. I, you know, we spoke about, you know, community development funds that were spent for officers to walk through, but we was always talking about how these grants can, you know, do different things in trying to curtail some of the negative things that may happen. How can these grants, you know, help? And so this grant on this animal shelter, it is great, because the Long Beach Animal Shelter, from all of the shelters that I've visited, and being the animal warden here for the police department, we had one of the best animal shelters ever. It was one of the cleanest. Anybody that used to go through it, I was the animal warden, so I take pride in saying that we had one of the cleanest animal shelters in New York State. We've received awards. We received a lot. And so it was very, very clean, and we was always updating and painting from corner to corner. And so I know that New York State has a lot of details of how the shelter is supposed to run, how vehicles are supposed to be, how ceiling tile, you know, it's a lot of stuff, just like every dog in New York State has to have an agricultural markets tag. And so, you know, I'm grateful that this shelter is receiving a grant, and, you know, hopefully the shelter can get a little bit bigger, you know, because, you know, hopefully we have a whole bunch of dogs that are not in the shelter. But again, thank you for, again, getting this grant. And anytime our city can get a grant to help save taxpayers' money, that's really great, because we had to put a lot of the city money into the shelter when I was there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, James, but I do want to point out, the grants team that we have here, Tyler, Patty, as well as all the other staff that's involved in it, because they do a lot of work, have been tremendous at getting a lot of grants for the city over the last few years.
Yes, they do.
So, great job by everyone involved.
Any other comments? You want to comment? Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Creighton, you might've said this, but I, we're getting a grant for $250,000, but then it says we are borrowing...
No, we're getting a grant for $225,000. There's a 10% match, so the total project cost is $250,000.
And what do we have to put out?
$25,000.
Okay, that's bottom line. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Linda, you look like you're undecided whether you're gonna put it all the way up or not.
I don't know. I'd like to be, I'd like to know what I'm talking about.
Me too.
I'm just a little confused.
Hi, Linda Giles, Long Beach. Where it says, "Funding in the amount of $100,000 was authorized pursuant to bond ordinance under Capital Project Animal Shelter," and will be borrowed in February 2026. So are we, we're borrowing money for this?
So we always, we always plan on borrowing the money, because we have to lay it out first before we could get reimbursed from the grant. You have to spend the money in order to get the money.
Okay.
So they are reimbursement-type grants.
So this is another situation where we don't know if we'll get reimbursed.
Well, we'll get reimbursed if we meet the qualifications of the grant, which we always make sure that we do. I think there was a comment made at one of the other meetings that, you know, nothing is a guarantee. Nothing is a guarantee. We don't know if we'll be here tomorrow. You know, asteroid could hit the Earth, so we don't know if we'll be here. I think that's the way the comment was meant when that was said.
Okay.
But I, we'll be seeing this money unless, for some reason, the federal, I think the question was on the federal side, this is a state grant, I believe. On the federal side, there's always a question of whether, you know, something very different happens, so there's a question about it.
I understand. My other question, not to do with this, but are we getting a dog park at some point?
Um, when the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project is done, the dog park will come back into play.
Okay, thank you.
My dog asked me about that, too.
He said it's too hot in the house.
Oh, it's too hot in the house? I want to be at the dog park, because I can't go on the beach. That's, we're gonna close that, please.
Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two jet skis, jet skis and trailers from the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. So Beach Patrol is requesting to purchase two new jet skis and trailers to support their operations. Their current jet skis are over 20 years old and well past their useful lives. These are used in life-saving activities along the beach, and life safety equipment in its use. City received three bids on the item, and Long Island Kawasaki came in as the lowest at $35,518 for the two jet skis and two trailers. I do have Chief Barowski here. There he is, I see him. If you have any further questions.
John?
Yeah. Can you just talk about why these models were picked? Because these are racing models.
Um, the jet skis that we currently have are 2005, 2006, they're extremely outdated, and just for the purposes of life-saving, um... So I'm gonna teach you, I can see that.
So the updated models are, those are the ones that were specified, according to Mike Robertson.
All right, I'm not sure that, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, there's obviously, there's all kinds of Yamaha makes all kinds, but these are their high-performance racing ones. I guess I'm trying to figure out why are we getting high-performance racing jet skis?
Well, they're not really high-performance. They're four-strokes, two-seaters, so we can have two lifeguards on it as we patrol or as we train or as we're doing recreational events like the mile swim or the biathlon.
And John, you showed me that site, it says performance models. Does it say racing on it, anywhere?
Well, this one is the supercharged race performance model.
The one that you're pointing to? Were we getting that one or the other one?
I don't know which one we're getting.
I think it's the other one.
We could definitely look at it. I mean, I didn't, Michael Robertson and, I think it was Jake that specked them out.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is, like, some of the other models, they advertise it as being known for durability, for example.
Correct.
Or, so, that's why I was trying to figure out, you know...
I would, to be honest with you, John, I think the majority of the jet skis nowadays are supercharged, compared to what we've been using for the last 22 years.
I mean, is there gonna be, how much of a difference in price would it be to drop down?
Well, I mean, there's multiple models, and they range from $8,500 up to $23,000.
Right, yeah.
So...
We could definitely look at it again and spec it out.
Well, I was just curious on why, like I said, a racing model just seemed...
I don't know if it says racing model again, I think on that, and if you look at...
Well, like I said, that one says...
Yeah, that one, it's, let's look at the one we're getting.
It says it's for championship riders.
So the difference on, the difference on these, and I think we had this discussion upstairs, these are used on the ocean side, they're not used on the bay, they're not used on the lake, they're not used in any, like, stagnant water, these are used for waves. Indeed, high performance in order to...
We got some high-performance riders.
Well, I guess what I was getting at, to your point, is we have a tendency to beat equipment to death. So durability is an issue for us, obviously.
Well, not for the lifeguards, because we take very good care. We've had these jet skis now for 20 years.
That's pretty good.
And now they're pretty much outdated. And you know how well we take care of our equipment.
Right.
But just for the, just to exact to, to expand on what Dan was saying, is they're ocean-related, going through waves. I mean, like I said, I have no qualms looking at a lower-end model, but you gotta have that, I guess, engine to get through the waves when we're in big surf.
Yeah, and I'm not saying a lower-end model's the answer. Actually, my concern was more, again, a performance model might be more finicky...
Less durable.
More finicky, less durable, requires more maintenance, you know, than a model that's more durable.
Correct.
I'm asking, is there gonna be a significant difference in the price that would be worth dropping down?
Oh, it completely depends on if you were to change it, what you went to.
And it also depends on, because we're pulling a sled...
Doesn't have XM radio in it, like that kind of question?
No.
And the other thing, again, I'm not proposing that it needs to be changed, I'm just, I was questioning, is this the right model?
I know, I agree with you.
For what we need, you know, because if you pick a model that's $1,000 less and we're keeping it for 20 years, I mean...
Right.
You know, it's chump change.
Well, it's, we're basically probably picking the model based on the pulling capacity with a sled, a lifeguard, and a victim on it on various weights.
So just so, did we pick a model or did we get performance specs? Because we received three different bids on this.
I think that's on models.
Yeah, because I don't think Kawasaki would bid against themselves, so I doubt we picked the exact model, right?
Correct.
Because how would they have three bidders? Right?
Correct.
All right, well, then it sounds like somebody figured out this is what we need.
Yeah. You said Robinson?
Mike Robertson, and I believe Jake was also...
Jake?
Jake.
He's the fire department jet ski guy.
Yeah, right, no, I know. He's made quite a few...
He's been out there, yeah.
Yeah, he's done some rescues on that thing.
Exactly.
He knows what he's talking about. Mike?
Is there any options? I mean, he's 20 years old, but can we sell one?
Yes, we've done it in the past, where we decommissioned one and we auctioned the other one.
Okay.
So, yes. Or we could take parts and use them for future if the new models fit.
And not only the trailers?
Um, I think it's just the skis and the trails, yeah.
Okay.
I guess you buy the trailer because the trailer comes, like, specific to the jet ski?
Correct, yeah.
So like, an old trailer wouldn't work for a new jet ski, probably, right?
Uh, something to look at, definitely.
I mean, you know, if we could go without buying the trailer, I mean, I...
No, I agree.
They're pretty expensive, too.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Not that I have one, but my dog does, but I don't have one. It's a lucky dog. Okay. Questions from the public? Mike? No, you had your hand up first, Mike. It's like the buzzer, it's like the buzzer on Jeopardy. Well, I saw his hand first, but I don't know if he had it up first, but...
This is why I'm here tonight, that's all. Mike Delory, Long Beach.
I think we discussed this ourselves, right?
I have, if you don't mind, I have information to give to, and even the councilman who's not here. So there's seven copies there, one for each member.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
I'm speaking as, on behalf, I'm the president of Long Beach Lifeguard Alumni Association, and as you can see in the package, and I'm glad the chief is here, the Alumni Association donated the cost of the attached attachment that I'm asking the council to consider. It's called a jet ski collar. I know Brendan was there, Chris was there.
Can we take that one off the other one? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, that's, that's the chief's...
Yes, yes, you can.
...opinion on that. I was told that the best operation to cover the beach by, you know, I had a conversation with John Scootin, and he thought having three jet skis would give you optimal performance, efficiency, coverage. Some of you may not know that there is an after-hours lifeguard program that the chief and others decide the staffing levels, and there's been a number of rescues that have occurred from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and those are, in my opinion, the most dangerous, egregious situations, because that's really life and death. And if you want a performance vehicle on a jet ski, that's when you want the race, the speed, because, as you know, when the fire department knows and anybody else in emergency services, time is of the essence when you have a life-saving situation. So, why am I here? I'm asking you to, for you to consider, in addition, whatever Yamaha jet ski you decide on. I think the chief, in consultation with the council. But it is important, I think, I feel, along with other members, that having an up-and-running additional jet skis for the beach season upcoming is very important. Those collars that you see in operation, that's for flotation, rescue, additional victims, I think can hold on to that device. It prevents tipping, which is the worst-case scenario, is if you have a jet ski rescue. And I think there's statistics in there, in the, I gave you all an alumni brochure that we publish every year, and the chief puts out annual rescue statistics, and I think jet ski is part of one of those statistics. And it's broken down, east crew, central crew, west crew, and as you can tell, the central crew has the most emergency service responses, rescues, preventions, first aids, EMTs there.
What crew?
The central crew. Central crew is from...
Center of town.
Center of town. That runs Washington Boulevard to...
I know where it goes, but it has the least amount?
Most amount.
Most amount, okay.
Most amount.
Right. Makes sense, right?
As you probably know from the volume of your beach report, the volume of activity and the revenue that are generated from that shows the additional revenue. and the revenue that are generated from that shows the additional revenue. So, to invest a couple of bucks into more rescue equipment, given that we've, you've done such a successful and magnificent job in implementing the beach revenue, you know, a few thousand dollars onto lifesaving equipment is, in my personal opinion, very worth it. And I think I could be, speak on behalf of the hundreds of alumni who know a little bit about what that collar can add to performance. If you think...
You're saying for another collar, for the other ski, right?
I would, personally, I would get two collars, well, you have one already that the alumni donated.
Right.
And, chief, if you want to, we, we were able to turn that around pretty quick, and therefore, it was installed pretty quick. And shortly thereafter, you had bad, you were, had remnants of a hurricane surf. And there were rescues with that jet ski in that hurricane surf. It wasn't, it was like the sweep, the sweep.
Right.
So, that collar helped tremendously. I think that's...
What did it cost?
It's, I gave you the copy of the quote. I gave you all the specs.
If I jump in here, so Jake actually sent me a note, he apologized he couldn't be here tonight, but he did say that the east coast of Long Island pretty much uses similar types of jet skis, as we're currently suggesting. He did extensive research on them. They will have, Mike, they will have the jet ski collar, inflatable collar on them, which will make them more stable, and we will need to get places, get them quickly, and they worked fine, et cetera, he said. But these are, they work for the, these are cheaper of the models. East Hampton Montauk are using the Yamaha GPHO jet skis, which are about three thousand dollars more than these, but these are, these will serve the same function as those similar type models that they're using out in Montauk and, and East Hampton.
Do they have the collar on them already?
Um, he said they'll be equipped with the collars.
That, that's what I wanna, that's what, it's not clear in that, that number. That number, if it's thirty-five thousand, or whatever this number is...
Right.
It's a...
That's including the collar.
I don't have that number. It's, I have it here. It's thirty...
That's what, I wanna make sure that it says, thirty-five thousand five eighteen.
Oh, here.
Unless you have a quote of what detail you're getting for that thirty-five thousand five eighteen, does it include the trailer? If so, does it include the collar? If so. So, all of that detail, then you don't have to spend any additional funds. But if you don't have it, you should consider...
That's right.
Adding that in, and have an operational buy...
I agree.
You know, the season made...
Can't script on that, no.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, it's, you know...
Should not. We should not.
If you have the available resources, unlike when I sat up on that chair, you know, in the council, we had less than half a million dollars in, in reserve funds. It's great tool for not only the lifeguards, and keep in mind, lifeguards provide coverage during the Make-A-Wish polar bear plunge in the middle of February, and the lifeguards, right, donate their, their time for coverage.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of things that, you know, that we do. We also, as you could see in the, and, by the way, if anybody wants a copy of the newsletter that I gave the council, you're welcome to it, I'll give it to you, you know, later. So, we all have the same information.
Lot of old faces in there.
You know, you have to. We only publish it once a year. The equipment like this, we only ask for...
That's great.
Maybe once a year.
Right, chief?
At least.
And we have a great working relationship as well, so...
Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I wish Councilman Lester a lot of luck, and I gave him a, a copy as well. All right?
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Yes. I have no problem with you asking it from there. Okay.
Two more steps in.
Yeah, right.
The first thing that I'd like to do is thank you as the chief lifeguard for teaching your lifeguards what they have to do to save people's lives.
Thank you.
I know that they learn, but there's no doubt in my mind that you keep pushing what needs to be done daily. Along with that, we talked about how much, well, let me finish, because I'd like to thank you, too. The fact that you are helping out the lifeguards by giving them that extra collar, thank you very much. You guys are terrific, too. Along with that, we talked about how much extra revenue we received this summer from, from the beach entrances. Is that how we are paying for these two, you said, vehicles to save lives?
I think it's in the budget. It's in your budget, right, Rich?
Well, capital expense.
It's in the, it's in the machinery and equipment line under lifeguards.
Doesn't it make sense to use the extra money that you already got from this summer?
Well, you, you have to have it budgeted. You can't just, we, we would have to do a budget amendment to add money back into the budget lines. This is already budgeted into budget, so we can use this money that we already have budgeted for. Otherwise, we have to do a budget amendment to add the money into the budget, which is, why do that if it's already in the budget? The money will just go into the general fund. There's, it's, it's apples and oranges, it's, that's...
No, actually, it isn't.
Well, it is, it is, actually. It's, it's the same money. It would be, whether it goes from this or into general fund, either way, I would have to take it from the general fund and move it out of this. It's, it's the same money. The accounts will still be the same in the end. So, I don't know what you're...
Okay. This summer, there were an enormous amount of rescues. Thank you. I know that it wasn't just you guys, it was the fire department, and it was also, I believe, the police officers that were involved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I do know that it's not usually Long Beach residents. It tends to be people that are coming from out of town. I understand that some people come from out of town late because they can't afford to go to the beach during the day. We made extra money this summer. How about having lifeguards work a little later? Because it seems like between six and seven-thirty are when most of the issues came up this summer. Can we get more lifeguards? We have the money. And you said that we can transfer money from one line to another.
Okay, so, the lifeguards are out there. That's, that's the idea, that they're working.
They leave at six.
No, no, these lifeguards are working.
Rich, you wanna explain the evening life?
Please.
During, during our season, we do work during the day, and then once we're off duty, we have what is called an emergency response crew.
How many?
That works every day from six to eight.
How many?
Five lifeguards, and one senior guard, and one EMT.
And where are they located?
Lifeguard headquarters.
So, they have to be called over. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the main areas, and also, West End, we have problems. I think we need to have more lifeguards, more than five, on duty to help stop this problem. We can't stop the people. Excuse me, Mr. Fiamara?
Yeah, I'm not talking to you.
I know.
Right.
But you're talking when I'm talking.
Yeah, I'm consulting with council, that's what we do. I have a dais. You can continue on.
I'll wait for you.
You don't have to wait for me. I'm just telling you what the situation is.
I just find it rude.
Okay, thank you.
I'm interested in having more lifeguards. I want more lives saved.
I appreciate your feelings on this, and I'm gonna defer to the chief of the lifeguards, because he's got the experience, and, and he allocates, he allocates and manages and schedules appropriately, and I think he's done a very good job.
I agree. I want him to be able to do a better job. I was a lifeguard for ten years.
I don't think he could do a better job because we didn't, we didn't have anybody drown.
I don't know if that's true.
Rich, how many drownings have we had this year, other than the one person that had the, the medical issue?
Zero.
Zero. Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate your concern. Thanks.
I was a lifeguard for ten years.
Okay.
I don't know how important it is.
Okay, so do I. I've lived here my whole life. I understand, I agree with you. But I go with the, I go with the pro.
And I want to give him more opportunity to keep it going.
Thank you. Christina, you had your hand up, or you, did you retract it?
Uh, no, I was not.
Just stretching, okay. Uh, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Rich.
Right, you didn't have anything?
No, but I have an amendment for item number nine.
Okay. Better you than me.
Okay, so we just have to clean up item number nine. I would like to make a motion to make the following changes to the item. To change the second-to-last-whereas clause from three to two bids. To change the last-whereas clause of the item from Carrier Corporation, located at 500 By County Boulevard, Suite 160 East Farmingdale, New York, 11735, to Premier Mechanical Services, located at 1493 Church Street, Holbrook, New York, 11741. And the same portion to change 107,500 to 103,700. In the resolve clause, to change Carrier Corporation, located at 500 By County Boulevard, Suite 160 East Farmingdale, New York, 11735, to Premier Mechanical Services, located at 1493 Church Street, Holbrook, New York, 11741. And the same portion change 107,500 to 103,700.
Who will second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing emergency HVAC replacement at the city recreation center as amended.
So, this item authorized the emergency HVAC replacement for the pool building at the recreation center. The system has been failing for the past couple of years, making it very uncomfortable for users of the pool. Between temporary generators and repairs, we spent more than thirty thousand dollars last year on the system just to keep it operating, against my better judgment. We received two bids to conduct this work in emergency fashion with Premier Mechanical, who we just amended to being the lower bidder at 103,700. The original resolution was prepared prior to obtaining the quote from Premier, so that's why we just amended it. Ken and Steve are here if you, if you have any further questions.
Okay, John?
Nope.
Chris? Mike? I, I got a question, but I don't know if they have the answer to it. Maybe Joe Brandt would have the answer. How often does this break?
So, this has been, I, I think, I don't know how old the system is, you guys may know, but I could tell you, I saw the equipment last year, and it was pretty, in pretty bad situ, pretty bad condition. This year, it actually rotted all the way through, where the heating element just fell out of the piece of equipment. This, this thing is way, 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 way past its useful life.
Right.
So, replacing it is really, at this point, the only option, which is why I put it in as an emergency contract. Do you guys know how old the old one was? Do you guys have any idea?
Oh, then you're, it's over twenty years old.
I mean, the idea is the pool's always too cold, right?
It's, it's rotted all the way through, like, literally, all the way through.
Okay. All right, so we don't have any questions on the council. Questions from the public? All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right. So, we've come to the end of the agenda.
Onto the voting.
I move that we lock vote and approve items one through nine.
You didn't even have to have a consultation.
I didn't have to do a consultation tonight. Mike, Mike had the stink eye on a couple, but...
Okay.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes. Where's everybody going? We're getting to the best part.
The city manager's personnel report has been filed by the city clerk. Oh, excuse me, I jumped the gun on that. All right, who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Who will second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Bendo?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Fiamara?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, fun time. I was afraid when they first pulled that first one. James Hodge?
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Me. On the last ride, man. Must have slipped that round.
I didn't, I took it as it was handed to me.
Oh, yeah, I didn't put it in, but so...
All right, okay. Sorry.
No, 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 it's cool.
I just took it as they handed it to me.
I just happened to be in the hallway and I heard my name.
I think we should put it into a bin and like roll it around, and then pick one out.
Hey, listen, however you do it. But, James Hodge, he took about ten seconds of my time, so, James Hodge, 95 East Farming Street here in our great city. Just wanted to say congratulations to those who are council members-elect. Congratulations on your reelection, and congratulations to those that gave their name to run. As the city manager spoke, it is a, it's a lot. It's a great journey to be able to submit your name to run, to represent our whole city. And obviously, you're running on a team when you pick a party that you're running for, or if you run it independently without a party backing. But, once you get in, you are in to represent everyone. It's not that we agree on everything, and that's how families are. We're all in this city by the sea together. We're all on this Barry Island. And so, I say to those that are coming in, just like Chris and Finn spoke tonight, and they didn't really agree on the Long Beach aware, and how it should be done, we should always be able to speak up and speak out. And it doesn't matter if we're on the same team. Local elections and local elected officials should always remember totally the people. I understand that sometimes the senate and the congress and people feel like they're gonna get in, and they're gonna do all of these amazing things, and they do, because we see all of the horrible things, to me, that the Republican Party is doing nationally. That's my opinion. But when they get in, you don't see no votes different than the whole party. It's what the Supreme Court has been doing now. All of the Supreme Court justices have been going this way. I'll, I'll pause.
Are you saying that the Republicans vote in lockstep?
If you hear what I'm saying, I'm saying the Democrats vote in lockstep?
Okay.
The Republicans vote in lockstep, in that matter. And I'm saying, as council members, because we're getting ready to get three council, two more new council members. And the five of you, yes, you've made history, and it's fifty-two years since the Republicans have run the whole city, but you all need to remember that you ran on a ticket, but now you're city council members to all. When you have a president talking about, I'm gonna cut all Democratic programs, I'm gonna hold SNAP benefits from forty-two million people, which, if you know how many Republicans are on SNAP, when you are looking to help people, you don't look at a party, you look at the need. And as you do need assessment, and people come and give you their complaints, and give you things that will benefit the city, you do it as a member representing everyone. And so, a whole speech here today talking about the council, never really heard that from the dais, but he did. He gave a whole speech, oh, they called me names, they called me that. Do that on your Facebook, or do that, you know, I've never really heard that much here. And so, I'm just saying, President, thank you for how we dialogue. We, you know, you done cursed me out plenty of times, everybody hear you with your extra words when I'm finished, they hear you. I don't, I, I could put it up, but I don't usually put it up, because, you know. So, but the, the point is that we disagree, but we keep moving. And like you said earlier, that's democracy. Me and you may disagree on a lot of things, but we come to be able to disagree and agree, and then move our city on. And so, I will be here. I know my team didn't win, but I'm proud of it. And I do celebrate and honor the life that we fought on and honored, and that's Petros Krimidis. His mother is honored that he received over five thousand... His mother is honored that he received over 5,000 votes. And so everybody know votes are still coming in, because it's still people that are in the military and votes are still coming in. And so I say to everyone, just to be able to be representing over 35,000, that's an amazing task. And so no matter what party is behind your name, remember the people. Every community, every race, every religion, and if somebody's not in a religion, just remember everybody. And so again, thank you, President, thank you, council, and those that are coming in, remember, it may be your team member that you ran with, but when you up there, you're all about the people, no matter what part of the city they live in. God bless America, God bless our city, and God bless this United States of America.
Thank you. I have to ask you a question. In '23, you got 3,000 votes when you ran for the city council, right?
I got, I got more than that, but...
You got about 3,000 votes.
Go ahead.
Matters to me.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, I thought you'd be running in 2025 and when you didn't run, I was very, very surprised. So, you say that you want to represent and you're an advocate for the people. Why didn't you run?
Oh, listen, Finn, that is such an amazing question.
I think so.
No, listen, listen, listen.
I've been thinking of it for a year.
You know how much men you fight, but I love how you dialogue with me. You, you know, I like that. And so why I didn't run? Because I didn't run. I, 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 listen...
I know you didn't run, I'm asking you why.
But let me tell you why I didn't run.
Good, that's what I asked.
Because the Republican Party sued me to keep me off the ballot when I was trying to run and substitute Petros for legislator to represent our great city.
No, 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 I'm asking why you didn't run to represent Long Beach. That's what I'm asking.
Because there was two amazing ladies, one a business owner and one amazing attorney, and there's still...
No, actually, they were installed after the placeholders put their name on the ballot. So you had an opportunity to run, but you decided not to run.
Say it again?
I'm just wondering why.
No, listen, I submitted my na, it's good you're having this dialogue, so everybody see, I submitted my name, I wasn't picked to run.
But you primaried to run in '23, so why didn't you do that? If they told you you couldn't run?
Because I just didn't run.
Please, please, I'm running this meeting, we don't need anything. When you want to speak, you can come up.
But Finn, I, 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 listen, I tried to run, the Republicans sued me to keep me off the ballot 50 days before the election.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. You had the opportunity to run for the council and be up here and represent.
And you know what? I'm up here, baby, and I'ma keep coming up here, baby.
I just want to point it out.
So thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you.
I appreciate you. I don't, listen...
I don't know why those people are catcalling at you, but I don't want them to do it anymore.
No, listen, 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 I, I, let, let, you guys, don't, don't, don't mess with the ladies. They call the peanut gallery...
They're yelling at you.
No, they, they, just leave the ladies alone. They work hard and they care about our city.
I'm on your side, I want them to stop yelling.
Thank you so much, President. It's like my aunties over there, it's alright, they can yell.
Thank you.
But again, thank you for asking me.
Okay.
But I tried to run and the Republicans sued to keep me off 50 days before the election.
No, that's not the, no, you had an opportunity to run for the council and you didn't run.
There was two ladies running.
No, they weren't running yet because they came for the placeholders.
Alright, I'm gonna finish and digress.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Because you don't, you don't know the details. And so it was two amazing ladies running and I supported them.
That's not what happened.
And, listen, your team won, let's continue moving and make this city the best.
That's right, we want everybody to do well in Long Beach, thank you.
Thank you, there you go.
Thank you. Okay. Eileen Heschen?
Eileen Heschen, are you gonna ask me why I didn't run?
I, I...
Everyone...
When they were looking for people, I thought you might.
Everyone in this room has the opportunity to run. But if you asked every person why they didn't run, it would be a very long meeting.
I didn't ask you, I didn't ask you that.
Anyway, um, my question was this, Dale brought up, well, somebody, maybe not her, about the excess money that you brought in from the beach this year.
Right, yes.
And I know during one of the talks, um, somebody mentioned $5 million. And people have said to me, "Wow, they made a $5 million profit." And I said, "I don't think it was a $5 million profit."
Nobody ever said a $5 million profit. You could go back and listen to the...
No, 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 someone asked me because the number 5 million was brought up. So I said, "No, I don't think it was a profit." So my question is, of, you brought in $5 million, is that right? On ticket sales?
Revenue.
Okay, and then you also had to, you had expenses?
Yes.
So, do you know what the expenses were?
We haven't done an audit yet of the books.
Okay, and then...
But we'd made more money than we've made before. So the revenue was up significantly, 800,000. So that means we'll be, either we lost less 800,000 than we did last year or we made money. What the, what comes out and when we do an audit, we'll know, but we definitely made $800,000 more than we did last year.
Okay, so...
Which is a good thing.
You can't answer...
I think you would agree with that, right?
My, my question was, did we make a profit or did we lose money? But you can't tell yet because you just told me that it's not audited yet.
It's not audited yet, correct.
How come it takes so long?
Because the, the season, the capital year still goes to June of next year, right?
Alright, so you'll let us know when you know.
Yeah, we, we actually won't know until after we sell more beach passes at, at the beginning of next season.
Okay.
It could, it's two different, uh, well, it's the end of the budget.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, but, good question. Okay. Phyllis Labuti?
Phyllis Labuti, Bob Jones Canal, 291 Blackheath.
They named after the golfers.
Mike, you brought up something very special. This is politics. And just as you feel that you were scapegoated or ridiculed in the paper and by a secret anonymous group, John's been dealing that, with that for eight years. Roy, for four. This is part of the game. I don't like it, but that's how it goes. Okay, but just understand, you're not the only one. This is the way it happens. So just as...
Let me, let me, address it to me and we'll talk, address it to me and then we'll, 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 we'll talk then. Address it to me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our people do the same thing that your people do. Is it right? No, but you know it happens. I'm not a lefty lunatic, but I've been called that. So this is what happens. What I want to say is, first of all, Roy Lester is on vacation. The vacation was planned to be today because the council meeting was supposed to be last night. I think it was the right thing to do to cancel it because of the election. However, it caused Roy not to be here. Another thing that I want to say is that there was a slight misunderstanding that was used by the other group to disparage Roy Lester. And I want to make the record clear, if you don't mind. Roy Lester voted no on Scudan, Bradish, and Marvell. First of all, because he knew already it was going to pass so that he would not be hurting them at all. His reasoning was, it wasn't put out to bid. They were given a 15-year contract when legally they were only supposed to be given a five-year contract.
Excuse me for a second.
And the rate was 2% a year.
I don't want to be rude, I don't want to be rude, but I, I just, I want to stop for a second.
For a second, you may.
I'll, I'll do it as long as I want to, actually, but I, I'm trying to be polite here, okay? Roy Lester was on the city council in 2023. The election took place on Tuesday night, the meeting was moved to Wednesday. So Roy, Roy Lester, as, as far as I could tell, and we already spoke about it, knew that this meeting was gonna be moved to Wednesday. So he chose to take his vacation when there was a city council meeting.
A Rome vacation...
But the second question is this, ma'am. The second question is this, the second question is this.
Is not planned in...
Why are you trying to say, say what Roy Lester said? Roy Lester had every opportunity to say what he said. He set it up here and there's a record. I don't think we have a need to go over this again.
Well, I do, I did.
Okay, alright, then.
And so please allow me to vent my feelings.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
I've been coming here since 1963.
Alright.
My husband was on the council in 1970. So some deference should be shown.
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's hearsay evidence.
I appreciate it. I also appreciate personally some of the things that Chris and Mike have done for organizations that I worked for, having nothing to do with politics. And I certainly appreciate the work that John Bendo has put into this council, into this community, and the same with Roy Lester, who served on the school board for many years and always was the watchdog of the residents' money. Thank you, and I'm glad I had a chance to say my piece.
Thank you.
Dale Greenstein?
Hi. I have two things on that sheet. I have spoken to you about the bicycles on Park Avenue, especially when there are tables set up in front of restaurants. Today, I had the same experience that I had a few weeks ago. I was walking in front of Billy's and there was a kid on a bike. I'm walking, he's riding his bike. I stopped dead. Because I don't want to be in his way, I don't want to get hurt. He looked at me and said, "What's the matter with you?"
I agree with you.
And he kept on going. What I'm asking you for is more signs saying, "No bicycle riding on sidewalks."
You know, no, I care, I care. Yeah, you're right.
But if you have the sign from the city of Long Beach, if there's a cop watching it happen, you have a discussion with that kid.
So I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I agree totally and not only here, but I work in the city, as probably many people here do as well. And it's even worse, people are gonna get hurt, people are gonna get killed. I hope it doesn't happen here, I hope it doesn't happen anywhere. But, yes, we need more education. I think every parent needs to tell their kid, "You can't ride your bike on the sidewalk. It's against the law."
Do you have kids?
I do, but they're old.
Okay. You told them plenty of things, I'm sure.
And they probably didn't listen.
Exactly. We need somebody with more...
Yeah, well, we give summons, they gotta get summonses, right? That's how it has to work. That's how you stop people from doing things. You give them a summons.
Works for me.
Yeah, I agree. I couldn't agree more, let me tell you.
Okay, uh, please do something, I, I'd appreciate it.
I will, I will, I'll try.
Okay.
All we could do is try, but we want to succeed.
Absolutely.
Right.
The other thing is, um, cleaning streets. There are signs in what I would refer to as the center of town, making people not park on a certain side of the street, especially in the summer, so they, the streets can be cleaned. Those are not the only streets that need to be cleaned.
That's the problem with angle parking.
With that in mind, I would love for you guys to come a little west and a little east, instead of just those streets. I do understand that those streets tend to be more popular with people, but I can't even park my car on my street. Well, you probably have the same problem by your house, Mr. Fiamara. Well, you're on my block. Good. So, with all the people using the beaches, there's a lot of dirt. I don't think I need to pick up a dirty diaper on a regular day.
You gotta see where I live.
Do you like doing that?
No, I don't.
So maybe we could get the guys to come down and clean a few of the streets. I do know that they come down once during the summer. They definitely do.
Okay.
But, once isn't doing it.
Personally, I, I think that our sanitation department does a pretty, pretty good job almost all the time.
That's not the question. And that, and I'm not putting them down for that, not at all.
Then I'm misunderstanding, now who do you want to do this cleaning?
I need them to do more streets. More west of where those signs are and more east of where those signs are.
Alright, we'll discuss it with the sanitation department.
It would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sam Pinto? Okay. Christina Kramer? God bless you. We watch everything.
Good evening. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Very happy about the turnout. For people who lead groups or associations, we give up our time to represent our groups and sacrifice our own personal three minutes every time we come up here. Uh, so I'd like to make a proposal that, is it possible somehow, some way, we could set something up where, like, the MLK people could come up and talk and Long Beach Aware can come and speak and CSCA, give them five to 10 minutes or something, maybe once a month or once every other month, so that these organizations can speak and get their thoughts out. Three minutes is just never enough to speak for a group of people that you represent. So that's a, a suggestion. And, for the rep, for the organization I...
Depends on your perspective, right?
I'm sorry, yes. The organization I represent, Protect Our Coast, you guys never sent me the letter, I'm a little disappointed. Ron did send me the letter and, um, it focused on the North America Supergrid, which is valid and great, uh, it was a great letter and, uh, it was an important letter, so thank you for sending that out. But I question, why aren't you reaching out to Nantucket and figuring out how to create a bad neighbor agreement with Equinor for Empire One? They are, if a blade falls in the ocean, uh, we're gonna get the debris on our beaches, our businesses will suffer, our, our real estate will suffer, our people will suffer. I really think you guys need to make a, reach out and get some money in the bank in escrow for, for what will happen in our future due to Empire One, 54 turbines. So the rest of my time I will take as a resident, I'm sure it's like a minute, um, but...
Did you rehearse this?
Yeah, but as a res, this is Christina, number two. As a resident, I'd like to see some decorum. In 2023, we, we had an Equinor snake oil salesman approach the podium and not say his name. One of our members, Kathleen, shouted from the back of the room for them to do so. And at that moment, uh, Ron Walsh got up and escorted her out of the room with the police because she demanded that he followed the, the protocol. First of all, I'm under, I'd like to know, what is the protocol? Because do I say my name, my name and address? Do I have to say anything anymore? I don't know what it is and I'd like to follow it. Do you want to answer that, no?
Well, I was here that night and I, I'm not trying to take sides on this, but I believe she was told not to speak up anymore. And if she did speak up, she would be ejected. She spoke up and she was ejected, so...
That's accurate, that's accurate?
So I, you know, I don't know what to say about that. I just watched it from, the, the, I was in the bleachers like you guys.
Uh, that, that is accurate. It's my opinion that stricter protocol, uh, should be instilled in this room because as a resident, I was appalled at the behavior and the language and the aggressive tone last week. You know, you guys aren't punching bags and for me as a resident to have to sit there and watch people berate you with their opinions and blame you for what the federal government's doing and insult you and the frickin' language was off the hook.
You ought to see what I did for a living before this.
Well, I, as a resident, I don't think it's right. And I'm gonna go over my three minutes like everybody else did tonight and it'll just be a minute.
I wasn't throwing you off, Christina.
Well, last week, the, the, the cats, 10 seconds, yelled at Tim, so that, uh, needs to stop as well, um, so, yeah, Tim went over 10 seconds and was shouted at, again, not just from you, but from the regular attendees, there should be much better decorum, um, and finally, I want to say congr- uh, congratulations for, uh, the people who have spoken, you're all, the people have spoken, you're all doing a great job, uh, de, as far as the beach goes, June was a very, uh, rainy, cold month, and for you to make a profit the way that you did, I'm very proud of what you did, especially on the skinny budget you proposed in the, in the beginning, and the, and finally, George, you didn't lose, congratulations, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christina. And a tag team, steel cage match.
Good evening, Tim.
Hi, Tim Kramer, 361 East Broadway, uh, first of all, I want to congratulate all six contend, contestants, uh, you know, for running, uh, when you put your hat in the ring like that, and you put yourself in the court of public opinion, you've already won, so congratulations to all six, a big round of applause for these people, uh, it takes a lot of guts to do that, and, uh, a tremendous amount of courage, so bravo to all six that ran, and congratulations to Mike and his team, bravo, um, so I just wanted to, uh, just ask a couple things, uh, um, first of all, the, uh, the, the red shed and the, on the Haberman property, how many, how many more decades, I mean, is, I mean, it, is this something that can get addressed and, and removed, I mean, it, you know, it's, uh, I mean, is, is it a funding issue, maybe there's, you know, the 75 million, not quite enough for him to remove that, I mean, I don't know what's going on here, it's been, it's been literally three, four decades.
I think, uh, John's gonna come up and answer that question.
Um, it's technically not in violation of anything.
That's, that's hard work.
When the property gets, uh, sort of overgrown, building department issues, or puts citations on it, forces them to clean it up, but the, the shed itself, technically, it's not in violation of anything.
I, I, I think it's, uh, I think it's, in my opinion, it's, the guy's sticking his, his finger in the eye of the, the, the community, and I, I think it's ready to stay as well, so that's, that's the first thing, the second thing is, uh, I, I brought this up before, and, uh, um, the, uh, the bridge, with, the, the banks on the bridge coming into the city, not, not the median, median looks great, it's the banks, the overgrown banks of the, when you get directly off the bridge, uh, you know, I, I, I always viewed Long Beach, you have two side doors, and then you have the front door, and the front door's gotta be perfect, it, it's gotta be perfect, and that overgrown weeds, and it, it's been like that forever, I mean, this is, you know, something that could be taken care of real fast, I, I think that really should be addressed, and also, uh, we gotta really get, uh, in, involved with a program planting more trees, you know, the, 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 the trees that we have are-
I thought we had a tree program happening. Right, okay.
Oh, you do have something lined up, okay, good, all right, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Judy Vining.
So the question is, how much does $18,800 extra time buy me? I have the check here, we had to wait for the vote, and- Who are you?
All right. I love it when they clap when a police officer comes up, that's nice, we live in a good town.
Thank you, Judy. And Rich, make sure you give that check to Ina.
Thank God for platforms.
Well, you have a platform all the time.
Not one that I stand on. Seriously, uh, I was thinking as I was coming over here tonight, that, um, we have been in existence for 25 years as a coalition, 11 as an agency, we're a rare combination in New York State that does that, and I was also thinking that one of my shortcomings is that I don't come here enough so that you guys can hear what we're about, and again, thank you for volunteering to be on, on here.
I will, I'll come, I hope everybody's happy when I get there.
Okay, it's, it's easy, you just need a Zoom link and we send it to you.
Oh, it's on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I thought it was in person, I, even better.
I'm work, I'm working hard for that, but it's not, I'm not winning, so-
I like in person, too.
I do, too, at any rate, but I was thinking, and I was looking at our history, and we have worked with, I think the count was seven different city managers, the council turned over at least three times in terms of majority since we've been in existence, um, I think we're up to eight, eight police commissioners at this point, um, six superintendents of schools.
Well, we have the best one now.
Six superintendents of schools, and somehow we have stayed on mission, we've been accused of being part of this party, part of that party, part of the reasons I, I go nowhere politically is because we want to work with whoever wins, and we want that, but we want the part-
Certainly, I think it's a, a nonpartisan-
Certainly, we've done our best to keep it that way.
Yeah, it's a nonpartisan-
Um, for sure.
Issue.
But, you know, the issue is not only underage drinking, right now, we have a lot of other, the, the money from this grant for this specific police activity is a federal grant that is aimed at underage drinking, period, you cannot use the money for other things.
Right.
There are other grants that, you know, hopefully we can get, it's a dicey situation at the moment with, you know, we did not know until, I want to say, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, that we were renewed for the stop grant that, that Rich was talking about, because it's part, it's, it's complicated, but it's part of SAMSHA, SAMSHA's no longer gonna exist, it's gonna be under the, ah, Make America Healthy Again, and nobody knows, so, yeah, the money's been earmarked, you know, we're just hoping the money will be there, um, that said, the more we have in terms of dialogue, the better, and there's, and I, I'm glad you've agreed to come as council people, we'll be nice, also, I know Judge DeCranus has probably had enough of us to last his lifetime, but it would be great to have a representative from the corporation council's meeting, because we do, we are policy-based, and you take a look at the bigger picture, and what changes, what changes everything, it's really if you change the culture of the community, bit by bit, doesn't, doesn't happen overnight, but it also happens because you have all the different players at the table, not agreeing necessarily, but hearing each other, so that would be a big help as well, to have somebody on the administrative level assigned, okay?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Nora Egan.
Nora Egan, Long Beach, Mr. Reinhardt, congratulations, Mr. Addis, and, well, Ms. Johnson's gone, so, but congratulations to your team, if Roy was here, congratulations, and congratulations to Ms. Butts and Ms. Mosley, so I have just three things, really quick things, um, so there was a post on September 12 on the city Facebook page about the train station and having a collective between the residents about landscaping and the work that's going on, it, have I missed, like, an announcement, is there a meeting between residents, or is there a group meeting with them?
No, that, not yet, there will be a, a discussion with them when we come to, uh, what we want there in the final, um, thing, right now, they're just, they're setting in paving stones, they're gonna be putting in planters, um, but they're gonna eventually be doing a whole, um, upgrade of the station, and that's when we're really gonna be, um, putting in our, our input on it, because we're gonna be asking for what we want the station to look like, but right now, this is just an interim measure, they're gonna be painting and cleaning up all the, um, the issues that they had there with, uh, vermin, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, which brings me on to my next point, so I was going to dinner two Friday nights ago around 5 o'clock, and I was walking on Park Avenue, and I did try to get a picture, there was two big massive rats crawling around on Park Avenue, like big ones that you see in the subway, and it was bright, so I did look into the sanitation rules, and there's a lot of rules not being followed by some of the businesses on Park Avenue, and I'm just wondering if we could maybe follow up with the businesses, and I don't know where they're coming from, but I've never seen rats like that in, well, there is no construction going on over there.
Yeah, we've been following up with some of the businesses already, but we're, we're continuing to do that, because we know there's an issue over there, originally, I know that when they're saying construction, I know that when they tore up the streets when there was that project along Park Avenue last year, there was an issue then as well, um, and now they have the Long Island Railroad, but I don't think that's all of it, but there's definitely more problems there that we're trying to resolve.
In the same area you're talking about, right by where, where the railroad is?
No, no, no.
On the side of the street.
No, it was, uh, across the street, heading towards, um, so between AdWords and National.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's not a good thing, I know.
Well, I know if I was getting into that car, I'd be like, yeah, frick, I'm not doing that, I, it was right there at the person's car, so, and then just one other thing, while I was waiting for the elevator, uh, I saw this newsletter from September, is this, this a monthly thing, like mailed out, or?
I recognize the handsome guy, and that's all I could see from here, though.
But it says September on it, I did get a flyer, um, or a newsletter, or whatever you want to call it, but I didn't get this one.
You didn't get one?
No, I got, like, the-
But you didn't get a new one?
But I didn't get this one that says September, so, are they being mailed out to residents, or?
Should've went to all of the residents, right, John?
I think John's gonna answer this.
Are they, like, a new thing, like?
Yeah, we send out at least quarterly mailers on diff- on different topics, that one, I'll be honest, I think we've been having some issues with the post office, um, because I did not get that one either.
Okay, so then I don't feel bad.
But somebody down the block from me got it.
It wasn't intentional, believe me, we want you to be up on everything.
No, but those are citywide, and the topics change, sometimes, you know, there's stuff that we do for the CRS program that talks about hurricane awareness.
Right.
We do regular city updates, we do the events one leading into summer, let everybody know what's going on throughout the summer, so there's different ones that go to-
Okay, I haven't seen this before, so I was just curious, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're all out of contestants, thank you very much, everybody, for coming out, please arrive home safely, and thank you for participating in Long Beach Democracy. Have a great night.